All right. Called a special call meeting to discuss our 21, 22 budget to order and turn it over to the town manager.
So council member Stone is not going to be present this morning. He called and said he's got some things going on. So just so in case you're wondering where he is, he is not going to be here this morning. I told him I would update him later today.
Can I add something?
Sure.
It's nice to see such a handsome.
True.
All right. Haven't seen the whole group in a room in a long time.
So we, you know, we looked at this back in March. You know, obviously quite a few things have changed since March. And we've got most of our revenue projections and things in and kind of tightened things up. So I think this is a pretty good budget. We have been able to fund quite, quite a few things in this year's budget, especially compared to last year's budget, which was very lean due to the pandemic. But I'm just going to kind of go through this department by department. And if you've got questions at any time, then feel free to stop me and we can go through that that way. If you'll recall, we talked about in March, a revenue neutral budget, which is what has been, what is being presented to council today. The revenue neutral tax rate will be 30.6 cents. Currently it is 33 and a quarter cents. So it is going to be dropping, you know, a little over two cents from what our current tax rate is. Our current general fund budget is going to be $10 million. Let's see, $10,808.798. Now, I am proposing that we appropriate $247,018 to balance the budget in this 21, 22 fiscal year.
To balance the budget, you're appropriating $2 million?
No, $247,018.
I'm misunderstood.
Yes, we don't have that. I don't think we have that much to appropriate. That would be in trouble if you were doing that.
Not a good way to start with this discussion.
No, it's not a good way. So I'm just going to go, I'm going to hit governing board first, since it's first on the list. I will say our general fund is up 6.6% from last year, which I think is to be expected really from the pandemic numbers to kind of an actual operating year is to be up 6.6%. Isn't really that, that much. On the governing board, the only thing that's really changed is going to be our contributions that we give to different nonprofits and different organizations. We did increase beautifications amount by $3,000, making that $8,000 total. And we also have in here something that we didn't have in the previous year, which is the Friends of the Fontifor State Trail appropriation, which is going to be $5,000 for them.
That's what we gave them in this fiscal year?
We did give them this fiscal year, that's correct. Let's see, administration. All right. So on the admin budget, the new, what you have new in here, there is a new position in the admin budget this year. So this position would be, is for really for kind of finance related duties that we are just unable to keep up with at this point in time. I'll say our HR coordinator continues to get a considerable amount of comp time throughout the year just because I think there's so many things that she has to take care of. One thing I would like to do with this new position is take away payroll from that position and move it to the new position. I think that is better suited in finance versus HR.
Yeah, I think so too.
And I think that's, it's just been a struggle, you know, probably for a long time. You know, when we had the previous person here, I think she was also accumulating quite a bit of comp time as well. I think this is something that is, that is needed. It's definitely warranted and we've, we've had a position, actually an extra position in finance that was funded years ago and it's just never been reallocated.
And you're going to ask some extra work? I don't know how much, but keeping up with, you know, the forthcoming government funds.
Yeah, so this position will probably do a myriad of different things, but one of those will probably be dealing with that American Rescue Plan funding, making sure that we're keeping everything together and we're doing our reporting, which we really don't know what that's going to look like yet still, which I would, I would suspect it will be cumbersome.
So the stormwater person isn't in this line item?
No, ma'am, it's not.
Okay.
It'll, it'll be in a different fund.
Gotcha.
Different path.
Well, it's actually going to be in the stormwater.
That's going to be utility funded, isn't it?
Yep. The other new thing in admin is going to be an increase in contract services. If you'll recall, I spoke to the council about this, it's been a few, a number of months ago, but our, our current email client is really is out of, we are no longer to get, no longer able to give new emails to folks. We're, we've reached our capacity. So we're going to be going with more of the Microsoft product with our email. Right now we use Gmail is what we use here in town. When we go with that, we'll have kind of unlimited, unlimited access to emails.
So is that Outlook?
It will be Outlook, that's correct. So with that, it'll be, you know, Outlook and you get all the, you know, you get all the Excel. And now you have to kind of pay for that stuff monthly where you used to be able to buy it.
Almost 365?
That's correct, yep. That's really all that's new for admin. For public buildings. Wow, that's yellow, I need to get rid of that. Paying attention to that yellow. So contract services is, is going to be an increase by $52,000. This is for the setup of email. There's a one-time cost that they've got to come in and do all the transfers of our emails to our new client. And then our phone system, we're going to be getting new phones as well in this budget. The phones we have here in town hall, I bet we've had for 15 plus years. They don't even make them anymore. So if they, if they kind of, if we've got issues with them, there's no replacements. So the new, the new phones will be, there's a initial setup for that. And then there's a monthly charge, of course, for the phone system. Our insurance line item has increased by $60,000, which seemed like a quite a big number to me.
Can you highlight which, where you are on this thing while you're talking about it?
I am on insurance.
God, thank you.
So the $60,000 increase, I think over the years, we, I'll just be honest. I think staff has struggled with keeping, keeping up to date on what should be on the insurance list, what should come off the insurance list. Now we feel like we've got a good handle of what is on the insurance list. We've sent that to our current insurance carrier and he is, he is suggesting that there will be a $60,000 increase. Also, you know, we've, we've had to use the insurance a few times this year. So I think that may play into that too with the increase of going up $60,000. I will say we've met with the North Carolina League of Municipalities last week to try and get a new quote. I don't know that that's going to be in, hoping that can be in next week. But if we can save a little money, I'll sure go that route. But right now, just using the 260, I think is a good placeholder for what we currently have.
Is Workman's Comp included in that line?
No, it is not.
Yeah.
This is, this is like liability insurance.
And buildings.
Buildings, things like that. Workman's Comp's in a different line.
Yeah. Did, did you have the discussion you had with Dana, I guess? Was that, was it the liability? Was it, was it your coverage for buildings? Was it some of both?
I think it's, it's some of both. I think more, more, more so than not is the fact that we've, I don't think we've had an accurate count of what we've had on our own policy. And now that we've added some things and increased a couple of the, you know, the, the amounts where we had, you know, insurance on something that might've been half, half of what it should've been.
Right, right. It's kind of hard to compare. That's a big increase, but it's kind of hard to say.
What exactly?
Yeah, what it's about. So maybe we'll have it in next year.
And then the other new item or the new, I guess, increase for public buildings would be capital outlay. So in the capital outlay line item, we have new financial software, which we've talked about for a few years, at least internally with staff. This would be for, you know, currently our software is Harris software. It's, I'm guessing we've had it for 20 years probably. It's, it's quite dated. It doesn't really do a lot of the things that we would like for it to do. So we are going to go out and try to get some new software. We have budgeted $110,000 for financial software, which seems to be about an average. It's pretty expensive. But that, they know that'll be, that would be, you know, the finance software, the water billing software, the payroll software, kind of the whole package. The other new items are, we're going to do some painting at the Center for the Arts on, I guess, the back of the building, the deck and stuff, the handrails, all that stuff. It just, it's kind of, it just hasn't been done in a while. So we need to get that taken care of. And then I also have a, the one solar project in here for the Carver Center, which ended up being about $80,000. If you recall, that whole, they did the analysis, I think, on three buildings, which was Carver Center, the Public Works Building and one more building that I'm forgetting about now. Fire Station. All those together, I think were about $400,000 to do all those projects. So I did fund, I do have one in here to fund at the Carver Center. I will say, and if that, if that ends up getting approved, you know, we're currently paying the electric bill up there now. So I think that would, ultimately that's going to save us money, I think, in the end.
I think it'd be a good thing to quantify for the board.
Yep, I can do that.
For the public.
So is this part of the county solar project?
Yes.
So they're, what part are they paying? I mean, how does that all work?
I don't know that they're going to pay any of it. I think that from what my understanding was, we were getting on kind of piggybacking with them to get a cheaper price.
Oh, okay.
I don't think they ever intended on funding anything, at least, at least, I mean.
They funded the?
They funded the study.
The study, right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but as far as the installation and all that, that's kind of going to be on us.
Yeah. If you, if you would, yeah, see if you can get some qualification on that, how the building works.
Payback and all that.
Current utility or payback.
Sure.
Yeah, that's right. I think public would be a good thing for the public to see.
Be happy to.
I'd also be interested to know how, what, how you landed on the Carver Center as the one to, you know, if it was going to produce the most.
I think it was, I'll get back to you.
Okay, thanks.
That's with the consultants, so that's their recommendation.
Yep. And so that's all that's new for public buildings. Planning.
Could you just go back to that slide overall and just look, just go back up to the top? If you were to restart it and just take a look at our, at just your differences. Your utilities, you're budgeting, and this is utilities. Remind me where we are, this is operating expenses and the?
Public, public buildings.
Public buildings. Utilities are, you know, you're budgeting $42,000 less than utility costs.
So this looks a little bit wacky because, you know, we, if you recall, we switched, we, we did have utilities in each department and we switched it all to this one. So that's why it looks, looks different.
Okay, is this, is any of the other large differences?
Years, 48,000. This is M and R miscellaneous buildings and that's been reallocated to different.
Trying to get some stuff out of the.
To appropriate to buildings, yep.
Yeah. And miscellaneous getting too large is never a good thing, is it?
Yeah, what are you, what are you using that money for?
Okay, is there another, is there another significant one? We talked about.
25,000. This was contingency, which we took out of public buildings. We have a contingency line in admin, I believe.
That's where your contract services, you mentioned that, that's the software, that's the.
That's the email and phone charges.
Insurance, we talked about that one, transfer to golf. That's probably just been moved somewhere else too, I would think.
So this.
Yeah, exactly why would that be?
This, I had, you know, typically we've done about 100,000. And this year, we, we are actually doing so good on our revenues right now on the golf course that I've made the decision to not do 100,000, do a little bit less and see how that gets us.
Yeah, sure.
But we are, right now, we're coming, we're already over by about $30,000 right now on our, on our green, green fees, which is great.
Good, very good. But that line item was always in that place.
That line's always been there, Larry, and I wouldn't put a whole lot of faith in these numbers on the far right, to be honest, but when I get you, when I get you something printed.
Yeah, what's, it's still, we're discussing it today. That's all we want to see, is to discuss the large differences. So that's, that's, that's why we're here. So I'm good.
Okay. And then this is all, of course, all our debt payments for different things that we do every year. This is, it'll be the last year of this Harren Street property. Of course, Black Mountain Avenue, that's what we refinanced, Public Works.
Is Harren Street over by the garden?
It is. This is the last, the last year for that payment. And then the downtown land, which I'm guessing is Town Square. I think that's what that is. All right. Planning. So you're going to see a big difference in salaries and I'll tell you why that's so much different. We're going to talk more about this at our budget, or at our regular meeting here in a week or so. But my plan on the salaries for planning, as far as the building inspector goes, we are going to be kind of moving that position in with the fire inspector position. That is my plan. Reasons for that, a couple of reasons. One is we advertised that position, I think, for about two months. And I think we got one application that wasn't qualified. This position is a specialized position. You have to have those licenses to be able to do it. Not a lot of folks, you know, the folks that have those licenses are going to be building inspectors elsewhere. So instead of, the other option would have been given the building inspections to the county. I did not want to do that. If we would have done that, or if we do that, we're going to lose about $300,000 in revenue from our permits. So my plan is to combine that with the fire inspector position. Would of course give him a pay increase, but it's going to be a much less salary line in the planning budget because of that, that full position is no longer in there. So that's, that's why that looks much different now.
Is that person qualified?
They are qualified.
Is he part-time now or is he?
He's full-time now.
He's full-time now?
Yep.
Will he be able to handle that increase in another full-time position?
He's been doing it now for, since Dan left.
He, he provided the notes?
Sure, Charlie Russell, for the fire department. He's been doing a excellent job. I mean, Jessica could sing his praises, but he's been doing really well. I think this does make it important for us to fill our part-time fire inspector position, which right now is not filled. So we are working on filling that. He is going to need some backup. I mean, that's, that's the reality of it. And I think once we get that position filled, it should be fine. And he, you know, I've had multiple conversations with him and he feels very confident that he can do it, so.
Great.
Let's see. Professional services are up in planning. This is for, I have put some money in here for the beginning of a unified development ordinance. We talked about that a little bit last week at our special call meeting.
I'm sorry, where is that, what line item?
That's professional services. We've increased it by 40,000 for the beginning of a UDO. We're thinking that's probably going to be around $100,000 roughly, but it's going to take more than likely two budget years to finish. Also, an increase in planning, the other major increase is the, that's not really an increase, but just to talk to you about capital. I have not budgeted anything in, in a transfer to the Greenway project. And I'll tell you why I haven't done that. Right now, we have, we have all, you know, the county gave us $400,000 for the River Rock Greenway. We have in fact saved a little over $400,000. So we've got about $800,000 that, of the 20% that we need. Originally, we needed about 1.2 million if we were going to go the project the way it was originally planned to be done. You know, with that kind of in limbo right now, I've just put it on hold on what we're going to put in just because we may have enough right now, I don't know. But with that kind of being looming on us, I didn't want to throw, I thought money would be better spent elsewhere, to be honest. Doesn't mean we're not going to continue pursuing and doing the project.
We can amend the budget just after.
And we've got, you know, we've got money at the capital project fund now. So I think we're good on that. The capital outlay for planning is going, going to be, we've got some, some money here for the implementation of our pedestrian bike and parking plans. So to do small things with those plans, like sharrows, signage, things of that nature, just to try and grab some of the low hanging fruit on those plans to keep them, to keep them going and keep energy on them. Also, the I-40 pedestrian connection that we've got to do some work on underneath I-40 there from Veterans Park over to the Community Garden. If you'll remember, we never had an agreement of DOT for that crossing. And now we've got that agreement, we've got to do some, some renovations, make it ADA accessible, things of that nature.
Yes, this may be a question for Tammy, but like the $800,000 that we have for, you know, for our portion of the, the Greenway match money, is that restricted?
So yes, it's restricted, but as a board, you can change where that needs to go. Like if it needs to go to a different capital project, you could move it. But if we can't move it, the board has to approve. They want to move those funds to a different capital project.
So not, not restricted in the sense of truly restricted because the board can, the board can change.
It's restricted because we can't move it to like the general fund or something like that. That is in the sense of a capital project.
Well, this is the reason I was asking the question. The fact, and I agree, there's no reason to budget money going to Greenways because we're likely not, you know, we need to spend it if we can, but in not doing that, this is sort of like, this is my question. Does it, it, it keeps, it keeps that couple hundred thousand dollars in fund balance? For the calculation of our, of our, of our fund balance number?
So the capital project is a separate fund, so it has its own.
So it's not part, so it doesn't, it doesn't matter one way or the other? I thought those were all the general fund.
Your capital projects are in the fund all on their own, I think they're.
But when, if our, if our fund balance, a target is 30%?
30% is our internal policy.
Internal policy. Those funds make no difference whatsoever in that calculation?
No, they're not counting, they're not counting that.
Thank you.
All right, that was it for planning. So for police, let's see. So the, the new, the new items for police, we're going to be taking two part-time positions and making one full-time position out of that. And that's going to be a more of a downtown operated position, if I'm not mistaken, chief. Contract services, these are kind of the big increases. Contract services have increased substantially. That is due to, and that is this line right here. That is due to the county dispatch cost. Right now, you know, originally those numbers that came out, that, you know, they based that off of, our cost was about $162,000 a year to fund that for dispatch for the county. Those numbers, we've been getting monthly reports on those numbers and they're quite a bit less than what was originally, those numbers originally based off of. So I would see that number decreasing in future years, the cost.
Well, for the, but it, it's not quite accurate to say, and obviously that line item increased, but the cost of dispatch went down.
Well, the line item increased there, but the personnel line item decreased.
Right, meaning the cost of dispatch decreased significantly.
That is correct.
50-ish, 50,000 or so?
Probably pretty close.
And, and could be more.
Yeah.
Likely will be more.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that number's going to go down.
So how, how long have both fire and police been at now on dispatch at the county?
Well, fire's been on it for a number of years.
Number of years, February.
At least.
We've all been on since February.
Since February, that's why I was getting at, so both have been on since February.
Yeah. And then capital for, let's see. Eleo supplies, they've seen that, that's decreased from the previous year, a bigger number. Let's see, mobile data, data terminals has decre, has decreased, that's zero now. I think as far as capital goes, that's going to be, let me make this a little bigger, I'm sorry. Capital, we have budgeted, the chief did ask for three police cars. I have budgeted two police cars and renovations to the evidence room in the basement of the PD. And then I think, if I'm not mistaken, this, this needs, this is our last year of paying these, paying this debt payment. So we'll be $151,000 richer next year. Fire. All right, let's see. All right, big increases in fire. Personnel, there are three new positions budgeted in, in fire. Scotty and I met with the county manager and some staff to talk about the Buckham, East Buckham Fire District rates. We were hoping to get some increase in that. We were unsuccessful, which we were okay with in the end. I think what it boils down to is the county is, is as far as the fire department goes, the county, the East Buckham Fire District, that money that comes in through that is restricted to the fire department. All right. So I'm going to go back over here to revenues and just show you kind of what, what that looks like. So the county, as far as the East Buckham Fire District, will be putting in roughly $1.35 million into our fire department budget, which is about, and it's a little more than half of our fire department budget, those funds are. So in order to get more funds from the county, we've got to fund more on our side, essentially. The county, if you look at the call, the call logs, the county, it's about a 45% in East Buckham District and 55% in the town, as far as the calls. So it's, it's almost an even split. The other new items in fire.
Could you stop, I kind of missed, missed, missed the point or maybe misunderstood. We didn't get an increase in, in the fire district tax.
That's right.
And then, but your comment was we needed to, we, we put more money in. Does that just end, I'm, I'm not connected with what you're trying to say.
Well, what I'm trying to say is that I think we need to be funding, we need to be funding, I guess, our portion of the fire department versus the county.
I was since, I was kind of understanding something like a match sort of situation. You're just saying we need to have, we have to have our contribution, is what you're saying.
And I think, you know, the, the county manager was willing to do an increase if we were willing to put, you know, more, more, more funding in. But I, I think that with the funding we've put in, that's going to make a huge difference.
And when you talk to her next year?
Yes. And for, I think for Scotty.
So did you finish discussing the fires expenses, like the three positions? Can you tell us more about that?
So the three positions are about $66,000 apiece with full benefits. That's insurance and everything. Those three new positions are going to be three lieutenant positions. And of that, you know, with three new positions, it gives them a position each shift, another position each shift, which is, I know we've talked about, if you just do one position, the unfortunate thing about fire is it's 24-hour shift. So one position really, it helps one shift, but not the other two. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, what else for fire? Let's go back to fires, a couple more things on capital I want to mention. So I've put in here, budgeted $70,000 to go to the capital reserve fund. And this is historically, I think we've done, we've done, you know, it looks like $80,000 in the past. I did 70 just to make it an even 600,000. So if the board is okay with it, you know, ends up being okay with this, we will have $600,000 in that capital reserve in this next budget. Right now, there's 530,000.
Does that buy a truck anymore?
If you buy it right now, maybe, but in two, in two more weeks, no. The thing about those trucks, you know, they, and I think that's a conversation, a good conversation for, for later. But the, you know, the longer, they just go up every year, you know?
Oh, sure.
I mean, I think from the last time we bought the truck, whenever that was, I'd guess three or four years ago, I would say that's probably increased at least 25% to that same truck.
So 600,000 doesn't do it. So not fully, full-size vehicle. Right. And so what, what would be about the replacement time for a full-time engine?
If you're speculating, it'd be about approximately a year.
About a year.
Oh, no, I mean, in our timing, like we purchased a new full engine, what, five years ago? Six or seven?
I think 17 was the last one we purchased.
Right, okay. Is that, is that a 10, 15-year life?
We have, we still have some trucks in service that are mid-'80s.
Right.
Eighty-five, eight-six.
I think typically, I mean, what, it's usually about a 20, 15 to 20 years, usually the life you're supposed to put on them, something like that. But we've got a few that are, they're longer than that.
So realistically, 2017, 2027, and moving up in there, it might be time to, that might be, if we could plan the replacement time, that might be in that ballpark?
Yeah, and I think, you know, maybe there's a discussion we have at some point about, well, do we want to finance trucks? I don't know. I mean, I think that's.
It's always a discussion.
It's always a discussion to have. So that's the 70,000 going into the reserve. The 135 is for a number of different things. A deputy chief vehicle being one of those. Our emergency signalization on Montry Road being one of those capital items. A boat replacement. We currently have a boat that we, that is used from time to, well, it's not used at all right now because it. it's not used at all right now because it's just flat, and it's got holes all in it, but it's, and it's essentially a rubber boat, but they would use that in any situation where they need to get in somewhere and rescue somebody, so, we have one now, it's just not functional.
Have we gotten a no about the earmark on the traffic signal, or is it still up in the air?
Over the cost?
We applied for that earmark?
Oh, I haven't heard of it.
Okay, okay.
So, on the, on the traffic signal, so, what's the approximate time of just getting that done?
I don't know, Mayor, but we can find out. I don't know how long it's going to take them to do that, I would guess a few months.
Yeah, I'd really, I mean, I'd really like to make that a priority, because it's a matter of just, I mean, it's not really us, it's probably installed by, purchased from somebody and installed by somebody else.
It will be.
DOT blesses it, that they need to bless it?
Yeah.
Have they blessed it?
They haven't blessed it, they gave us an estimate of what it would cost, which is kind of where we got that thirty thousand dollars from, I think they'll be, I don't think they'll have a lot of issues with it.
I just, I just think it's, you know, you go through towns, especially now that we're getting busy, and it's been out of, you know, pandemic shelters over in town, it's back to being pretty busy this time of year, Memorial Day weekend, it's, I don't, you know, it's, it's, I don't know how you get out sometimes when there's, you know, when there's traffic, you know, twenty cars backed up there on the Montree Road. And that would help, I suppose, just because it stops traffic in all directions, and makes it a little clearer at the intersection, just that everybody needs to stop. Is that, is that how you see it, Scotty?
This is a safety issue for one, responding, protecting the community, as well as our response, but also allows us to have a quicker response time, by giving us that means of address.
Yeah, yeah, so that'd be great if we could just get that, get that rolling, since it'll take a little bit of time, but, you know, have the money for it and just move forward, but that'd be great, send the budgets back.
Yep, we will do that.
That's for police and fire, correct?
That's right.
It works, it works when you leave, when you leave the station, you send the signal, is it something in the, in the engine, or is it something at the station you press?
There's two different models, one is on, which this one would more like to be a boat that's fresh, about a second with the tone to the wall, you hit that and it changes to light, and there's another system that you like to put as you go, put on every stoplight, so that when the engine is approaching, the stoplight turns red for the other direction that it's approaching from. You're like, so, but that's opposite, and it comes to future projections, but this will be a signal and interruption device that you get going out of station.
Right. And Chief Brandon, do you, does that really apply to your, to your officers, or if it's congested on Montree Road, they probably just don't go that way, you get out and call them, do they?
That's correct, it's more so for the fire.
Yeah.
Let's see, boat replacement, I mentioned, high-pressure rescue airbags, rescue rope and hardware, and a backpack blower, that's the remaining of capital for the one thirty-five. Public services admin, not a lot of changes here. Actually, there's nothing really changed here, except, I failed to mention at the beginning, I am proposing a three percent cost of living for the staff. No merit, just cost of living.
And I think you mentioned that in our first workshop, just as far as, you know, it's not the first time it's been made public or anything.
So tell me about the urban forestry committee, are we, do we still have one?
We don't, so I really just need to take that five hundred dollars out of that line.
Or make a, do we want one? I mean, I don't know the backstory on that.
Well, I think, you know, we had one, and Jamie probably can probably tell us a little better than me, you know, that committee operated for a number of years, and I think in the end, it was hard to get folks to get on the boards, and I think we're kind of having trouble now with some other boards of getting, you know, recruiting folks to apply for these, for these appointed boards, but that one was hard to get quorum, it was hard to get membership, and I think, you know, staff did a lot of the behind-the-scenes work, which we continue to do, you know, we're still a tree city, excuse me, and we do all that stuff for the tree city, you know, they did do some Arbor Day events, plant some, plant some trees and things like that, but we just decided that, due to the fact that it was hard to get folks to come on that board, we just kind of got rid of it.
How about we do this, how about you leave that five hundred dollars in there, and let's still plant a tree on Arbor Day, we figure I'd have to do that, I would do.
Probably plant a few for that.
You know, I mean, it's always a nice thing to do, and we could probably get somebody to, you know, I mean, what do y'all think of that?
I think it's a great idea.
Couldn't be a downside to it. It's a good place to put a tree.
You know, there's some, there's some legislation going, I don't know how, where it sits right now, going through the General Assembly, you know, with all these cities and towns that have tree regulations, if they're not, if they were not initially set up with a local bill, they're going away. So they will no longer be able to regulate trees, you'll have to go back to the General Assembly to get a local bill to do it.
So when you say regulate trees, are you talking about on non-town property?
I think that's the way I understood.
Because our urban forestry was mostly around town property, correct?
That's right, that's right.
So we don't really have any tree ordinances around non-county?
No, ma'am, we don't.
But if we wanted one, we'd have to go to the General Assembly?
If that passes, if it goes through. Yeah, it hasn't yet, to my knowledge.
Great.
All right, public services streets, so this, let's see, what's different in this one? Really, the only big change in public services streets is going to be capital, it's not really a change, but just to kind of go over with you what this is, a couple of things, it's a new vehicle, and then a vehicle lift, so the vehicle lift would be used in the shop to do maintenance on these trucks, to drive the truck up on, kind of like you go to an old, you know, it's just much easier to work on it if you've got it lifted up, versus crawling under it on the ground trying to get to things. So that's really the only change, or the only thing new for this department, the street department. Now, all the paving you're going to see come out of Powellville this time around.
Is that a lift that services all of our, all of our equipment? It's like the new sanitation trucks and everything?
Well, I don't know that a lift.
No, it wouldn't lift that.
Just because of the weight, but all of our regular vehicles, like right now, we do our own maintenance, but, you know, you have to get on the truck, creepers and stuff, and use jack stands, which is really not safe.
Not safe at all.
So, you know, with that lift, that's, that's why it's a big change.
The bigger trucks you send down to, 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 to truck service?
Depending on what it is, but a lot of times, they, for the, just the regular service and stuff, they come on site now, which helps us.
Oh, that is nice.
Because they can come and service the truck on the site, and we're not down on much on downtime.
All right, this is, this one is parks maintenance, not a lot of changes here, pretty, pretty straightforward, this one is. Capital outlay and parks maintenance is. All right, we'll come back to that one, but I'm pretty sure the mayor's right, one, part of that is a lawnmower, and the other part is fountain pump for the lake.
Have we moved on from that? I have a question about the parks. We spoke a couple months back about potential, kind of cosmetic upgrades to like tomahawk around the path, and benches, and things like that.
I do have some benches budgeted in here, it's in a different fund, a different, a different department. As far as cosmetic, I mean, we've got, there's some maintenance money in here that we can do a few things, I don't have anything in particular budgeted for any kind of maintenance projects, we just don't have anything in mind right now. And I think that there would be some opportunity potentially on the Tomahawk Avenue side, you know, we've had quite a few comments about the water coming off on that side, to do something different with that, with that landscaping, we could do, probably, more than likely to do that in-house, I just want to make sure whatever we do doesn't, doesn't require a lot of maintenance. Right now, it's, it's really just dirt.
Water on the Tomahawk Avenue side?
So, if I'm right, that is Tomahawk Avenue on the upper side of the lake, so I know there's Teresa Fuller, for one, talking about a lot of water coming off, whatever, some of those pigsty coming down, and there's really no, I mean, there's a few trees who are there, but there's really no, there's no ground cover, it's essentially just dirt. I mean, there's, I think there's some opportunity there to do some stuff, I don't think it would be very expensive for us to do that in-house, but as far as anything specifically budgeted for that, I do not have that in here.
Would upgrades like that be something we'd want to put in, or would they just kind of come out of a different maintenance fund?
It could come out of this fund, or it could come out of, you know, the Parks and Rec Fund, either one. I mean, depending on what it looks like, we could always do, you know, a small amendment later if we needed to, a budget amendment, but I wouldn't foresee that being a very expensive project if we do that in-house. Four or five thousand dollars would probably get us a long way.
Great.
But the benches are in here in a different, in a different department.
Okay, thanks.
So Powellville, this is looking much different than it has in the past, but this will be, so as I talk about the Powellville, I think this street paving excerpt or the little sheet I gave you may be helpful. Obviously, we can't do all these streets this year, but I just wanted to give you an idea of what it looks like, of what it costs, of the cost to pave streets is, it's just, you know, even with budgeting, you know, five hundred thousand dollars for street paving, you know, it's going to get us farther along than we have in the past, but it's not going to get us, you know, probably where we need to be.
Is your list prioritized?
These are not in any specific order, I'll say these fourteen roads are the worst-shaped roads right now, as far as the prioritization of these fourteen, that, they're not in any type of order, Mayor.
Could you do that? Can you prioritize them?
We could do that, if you're keen.
I mean, we're going, I mean, I, I don't want to oversimplify, but if we're going to spend, I am like, we've got six hundred thousand, six dot.
It ends up being about five hundred thousand dollars in street paving, some of this is sidewalk.
That list was just sort of a list to give an idea of what it costs to pave roads, two-lane versus single. As far as the road assessment's done every five years, and they come and assess all roads, and of course, that can change over time. The problem in the past was if we had money, there may be a road on there that's rated worse, but we didn't have the funds to pave it, so we had to, we had to repave one that was maybe rated a little bit better, but still needed to be repaved, but it was that road we did get paid even lower, which the cost goes up as, you know, as the road deteriorates, the cost gets higher, and then speaking with.
That's why I think that's like every transportation project.
Right, exactly, and then, you know, of course, the cost, I think, is one of twenty and twenty-five percent on asphalt issues, and it's the contractor.
So, but, but that's what we want to do, and if we're going to spend a half million dollars, we'll prioritize it.
Absolutely.
And, and if we do, they do, when you say, Daddy, DOT, who does that, or do you do it? Do our, do we contract it out?
We contract it out, yeah, we get three beds.
And so that was done last?
You started up the analysis.
That engineer did it last time, that worked for, I just want mine.
That's okay.
Jamie, he was one of our papers that, that does the road assessments.
And so, but how long ago is that?
Eight, two thousand eighteen?
Two thousand seventeen, it's due in twenty-two.
So it's due, coming out?
Yeah. And then, if you, you know, if you look at this, Jamie did reach out to the same individual, and that's kind of where we got the twenty percent increase, the twenty-twenty-one number.
Well, if it's due in twenty-two, can we accelerate it just a little bit? How much, what's the cost of the, is that a big cost?
If, if we went through an engineering firm, I think it was, it was phenomenal the cost, but going through it again, it was like five thousand dollars.
We need to do that again.
If we could do that, just to help us with our decision-making, because we've got a lot in front of us, we probably need to do, try to do about the same thing next year if we can, don't we?
We do.
Stay after it.
We really need to stay.
And just as a reminder, the public watching, that we, we allocated a lot of money to sidewalks over the past several years, and that's what, I think, what everyone wanted, that's not, I'm not being critical of that at all, but we, it's time for us to pay attention to some of the roads, so, to me, that would make sense, at this juncture when we're getting ready to dive back in to try to get some of our streets back and, you know, just maintain, that we go ahead and spend that, if we can get a, get a little handle on the priority from the person that did it last time, that'd be great. You probably could do it somewhat reasonably yourself almost, couldn't you?
Absolutely.
But his, his or her help with that would be.
It gives, you know, it gives us a five-year plan, helps with sharing that information with people like EMSD, because if they come in to do maintenance, you know, it helps me not to pave the road, and also come in tired by, by just kicking back land, which saves us a lot of time.
Okay. So half a million dollars is, looking at this chart, it's going to give us about a mile of, of street, is that right?
A little over.
A little over.
Yeah, maybe a mile and a half, not a whole lot.
For five, for five hundred thousand.
I mean, it's, it's, it can be, you know, and if you look, you know, we maintain forty-four miles of roads, and this list is almost five miles, is what you're looking at right now. Now, all forty-four miles of roads don't need to be paved at one time, and we have roads that are in great shape, but, you know, we only get, the Powellville funding has, you know, over the years, it keeps going, we get, we get less money than we used to, and right now, it's about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year we get from the state to help us maintain streets.
And all of that, all of the money we're talking about, using right now is Powellville money, right?
Yes, that is correct.
So I wonder, and, you know, we have a lot going on this year, of course, but I wonder at what point we need to start allocating our own money for, for street pavement, if the price is increasing twenty percent in three years?
And something else to think about, too, is if you, you know, some of these new developments and stuff that's coming up, if, if it's voted to take these over, and we take those roads over, too, and we're still not getting more Powellville funds, and then, you know, golden rule is, is roads need to be repaved about every fifteen year, some sooner than that, depending on, you know, if they're on the north side, and you've got a lot of freezing involved, and there's some, there's some factors to think about, you know, you can take over, take over more roads, but you're not getting more money, so, just something to keep in the back of your mind.
Anything else on Powellville?
So, is Powellville, is Powellville, is there a connection with Powellville and the, and the gas tax at all?
Yes.
Maybe that's why it's decreasing.
So the more efficient the cars get, and the more electric cars we get, the less money.
Yeah, that's, that's not been a good point ever, Chris.
I continue to drive my diesel and put the most money I can into our, do our Powellville funds.
Thank you.
All right, so where are we now? This is sanitation, so this, you know, this is kind of our first full year doing sanitation, this, this budget, and last year was a partial year of sanitation, we took over in, I think, late September, early October, so we've got a better idea now of kind of what some of this looks like. I'll tell you, the, the maintenance and repair of trucks really surprised us, we had budgeted, you know, not a whole lot, and then, for this year, I mean, it's increased forty thousand dollars. Now, that is, we have to change the tires a little more often than we thought we would have to on the sanitation trucks, and they're not cheap, I think they're about four hundred dollars a piece.
Change them every six months.
Change them every six months.
Change tire every six months.
Things like that, so we realized, as we've got into this, you know, it's just a little more, some of the stuff that we hadn't thought about on the front end, which I think we knew was going to happen, but it's just a little more expensive to do some of this stuff.
Still, though, you back off financially.
It's still cheaper.
It still works, and, and we have control over it, so, the town needed to do that a long time ago, it's just such a big, a big jump, splurge, whatever you call it, to take, big step to take, that, you don't, we didn't do it till you had to, but now that we did, it's good to have, it's been a piece of cake, hasn't it, Jamie?
Piece of cake. I'll say, my phone rings a lot less than it was, so, I think it's going much.
It's ringing really well, I'm ahead.
Yeah, I think so, and when it rings, at least you have some recourse other than calling, and I think they tried to provide good service, but it's better if you can provide it, so that's great. And now, you just have a new truck delivered the past few days.
Yeah, we had a scout truck delivered, that's a backup for the scout, yes.
So you've kind of got your fleet where you need it now.
Yeah, we got it now, yeah.
Let's see, so capital and sanitation, I have budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars for some new, excuse me, new downtown trash cans. Trash cans we have downtown now, I guess they're probably from the seventies or eighties, they're pretty old.
They've been here longer than I have.
And, you know, it's time, it's time to replace them, and most of them have, you know, cigarette, where the people put out their cigarettes on top of them, it's just, it's just time, so. And then our debt, of course, this is for all the, all the trucks that we have, we've got that budget in there, still eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, it's pretty good for a sanitation budget, really.
Where are the tipping fees in there?
Tipping fees are right here. Landfill charges, $160,000, is what I got budgeted. So in our tipping fee charges there, that, that would be our landfill tipping fee charges, and also our Kirby charges that we pay for recycling. Both are in there.
What are the recycling Kirby charges? I think you got off the top of your head.
I think it's about around 30, is it $30 a ton?
That's what I thought.
$30 a ton or so?
Well, I guess it'd be $160.
I think it's around $30,000 a year, roughly.
Something like that, yeah. Thanks, I just want, I'm just curious of the number.
That's fine.
Not a whole lot you can do, but, and I'm just curious about it.
Sure. You know, and we talked about at one point, and we were going through that whole, you know, taking on garbage, you know, did we want to have Kirby do the sanitation for us? And I think it ended up being much cheaper for us to do it in-house. Recreation admin, all right, let's see. Not a lot of changes. Um, I will say, we have increased, as far as salaries, part-time, I did put $10,000 more in salaries, part-time, for community garden work. So I have increased that line, however they want to spread that around. But I think they are getting, you know, I get updates from Diana now about, three times a week, probably. So I'm getting plenty of updates from them, and they are, they stay busy, and they are, they're doing a lot. So I know, I've, I've talked to Council Member King a few times about potential for doing some composting, and I think some of those extra hours may help with that, getting some education out and, you know, teaching some folks about composting.
I appreciate you doing that. And just to fill everybody else in on what I was thinking in that regard, it feels like we have some control on how much weight we send to the landfill locally. If folks knew how to recycle better and how to compost, we could reduce the weight that goes there in addition to helping the environment and so on. And I know I have questions about recycling all the time. Can this plastic go in or that? You know, there's just a lot of details. And the composting, I think, is the heavy part of the garbage. So I spoke to Josh about trying to have some kind of educational opportunity. We have a lot of experts in this town, besides the garden staff. There are a lot of folks in this town that know a lot about recycling and composting and so on, and perhaps creating some kind of volunteer committee that could design an educational program and get the word out in the community that this is your way to keep the, the costs down in our landfill charges, and also, you know, do some good things for the environment. So that's kind of where I was going, you know, lighten the load campaign to, to really encourage the community to minimize what they actually throw into the landfill. And I really appreciate you working that into the budget.
How about anything we could do to, you know, if we lighten that load, any amount, we're gonna save on our, on our landfill charges. This is recreation admin. Like I said, not a lot of changes. Capital, $140,000. So, right now, this is made up of a new van for, for Parks and Rec, tennis courts that we've, I know we've talked about that for a few years. Last year, we didn't budget any because of COVID, if I'm remembering correctly.
But this gets us up to the 120.
But this gets us to the 120. So yes, we're, we are, we will be ready, once this budget is approved, to move on that, get that done. This would be resurfacing, is it new fencing, too, or not?
Completely rebuilding and re-fencing the...
So it's, it's gonna be kind of a complete makeover of the courts there at Lake Tomahawk on the upper portion.
Those are the, those are the popular ports, aren't they?
Hmm.
So they say.
And this is where I have benches for Lake Tomahawk in here. So we've got, I would say we should have enough money, probably budgeted for about 10 benches, at least.
Okay.
And also Part F. I have $40,000 in here for Part F. This is for, if you'll remember, it's been a number of months ago, maybe even before COVID, but there was some, originally, when the Part F application was submitted, five, three, four, five years ago, there was some discussions with Kiwanis about providing $40,000 to the town. Unfortunately, that never came through, so we've got that to make up. So I have that budget in here. We are, I'll tell you this, we're also, we've tried now for a number of months to get an easement on Veterans Park Drive for sewer. At the end of the road, end of Veterans Park Drive, where it intersects with Blue Ridge Road, the sewer is accessible there, but we have been unsuccessful in getting an easement from that property owner for sewer connection. Now, the other option, two more options would be to have a septic system, which we did research, went through the county, that land will not perk. This would be for bathrooms, excuse me, a new set of bathrooms at Veterans Park. Septic won't work, and then the other option would be vaulted toilets, and to be honest, I'm not a fan of those. I don't want to have to be out there pumping those out. And I think they'll just, I think it's just gonna be more trouble than it's worth to have vaulted toilets. We do have those toilets that are existing now that have been winterized and are able to be used all year round there inside, you know, the baseball portion, baseball field. So if we can get an easement from the property owner, Attorney Sneed has been trying to contact this gentleman, then we'll pursue that. If we don't get that easement, I guess we may need some direction from council. I'm just, I don't know if you all know what a vaulted toilet system is, but kind of anything on the parkway where you go in, it's just, I mean, you know, it's just poor John, essentially. But those just aren't, I don't know that I'm a fan of those, and how that would be out there.
Let's see, how, how it goes with pursuing it.
So, so that money's in here for that reason, right now. I think that is Recreation Gray Eagle. As you can see, there's really not a lot in here there. What did not make the budget for this, there's some work that we've wanted to do for a few years now. I mean, it's not, it needs to be done. It's not, it's still, the building's still usable, but we want to redo some of the roof on Gray Eagle. And if you've been inside of that, it's just kind of, it's getting a little bit dilapidated. It needs to be updated. But that did not make this cut of this budget. So that's why there's nothing in this actual department. Lakeview, it's pretty straightforward, not a lot of changes at all to Lakeview. So this would be, this is really for the position we have, which is Melinda, who works at Lakeview, and then some part-time folks we have that work there as well. And just not a lot of changes really at all to the Lakeview budget. Nothing, nothing really new at all. And then the pool, I, I know I am excited, not sure how excited Josh Henderson is, but I was excited to see them. You know, when I came back in town from vacation this weekend, on Monday, the pool was packed. It was, it was good to see folks back out again at that pool.
It was, I drove by there yesterday, it wasn't packed, but it was also pretty chilly by the time I drove by. There were still quite a few people sweating.
And, you know, and I think, overall, I would say, you know, we've had a lot of positive feedback, and folks, I mean, folks have been ready to get back in.
Yeah.
They just have.
They're dug it up.
But not, not really any changes to, to the pool budget, not a lot different. We do have a little bit more money on some maintenance and repair equipment, but that's just, you know, the pool was redone, when was that, back in?
2010.
2010. So it's, it's been, you know, it's going on 12 years now. So we're, our plan is to kind of do a thorough analysis of that this year, and potentially budget some upgrades in our, I guess, the 22, 23 budget, but...
A pretty big price tag on that.
It could be, you know, just depending on what, what may be wrong. We did have a leak out there this year. We ended up getting it fixed. It wasn't too bad, but I think it's time that we do some, some digging in a little deeper, making sure.
So we look this year and budget next year?
Yeah. And I think that is it for general fund. Any looming questions right now? I know I'm going through this kind of fast, but if you had a document in front of you, it might be easier. But my plan is if, if the board feels comfortable with what I presented today, would be at our next meeting, we have that printed out version.
Have the budget board have it.
Have it ready, kind of, to look at.
Sounds good.
Ready for water fund, or?
Our next meet, what is today? Third, 10th?
So...
The meeting next, the 10th, and so that's about the good time to see if we can get the public hearing on the calendar.
So, yeah, I, I would envision, and if y'all have different, a different idea, that's fine. I would say, depending on how far we get today, it's 9:30 now, if we have one next week, that would be 30. And if y'all want to do that in the morning, that's fine. Or we could tack it on to the end of the agenda. Would be up to council.
Let's just be, if it's agreeable to council, just meet at 8:30. I just think it's...
Final meeting.
I think these work sessions go better if we do them first thing in the morning.
And then...
It shouldn't have to meet very long, but it'll allow us to look at the organs that we're gonna pass.
And then have a, a special call meeting for the budget option.
Right, right.
I'm thinking, you know, the weekend or 20th, somewhere, but...
So you hit the water fund next?
Hit the water fund next, if y'all, if, if everybody's ready for water fund.
There may be good to that, because I mean, the golf, there's not too much with the golf course, so, you know, the water fund will be, just go for it.
Okay. All righty. Water fund. All right, so the total water fund budget, at least recommended, is $2,216,000. That is up 28% from last year. That's quite a bit of an increase. A rate increase, this year I have proposed a 10% rate increase. A 10% rate increase would mean for the average person that uses 5,000 gallons a month, would be $3.42 extra. I would say 5,000 gallons a month is probably not the average, but probably more, around 3,500 or so, probably. But, so the rate increase would be 10%. Customer service, we have budgeted in here for capital, actually, let me go back, let me just stay on this one, let me stay on this, this, this page. You're gonna see, this is, let me go to summary. That's about, that's not right. So our system development fee revenue has continued to grow. You know, this is something we, we had to put in place. It was state law that was passed. We used to charge something called an impact fee. They made that, they did away with that, and you had to produce a study in order to charge what they call a system development fee, or a capacity fee, pretty much. So this, this has continued to grow every year, and this money kind of, it goes into its own special fund, and it can be used for capacity upgrades. So any kind of water line upsizing, or pumps, things of that nature. So this is, I think this, this fund now has about, I want to say about $300,000 in it or so. And that's what we're projecting that we get for this, for this upcoming budget. Pretty much every new house that's built pays around, I think, $5,000, roughly, just to get hooked up.
Is it 35 or 5?
It's 35 for your coverage, because it goes up by February.
I think it would, I don't think it's unwise to take a look at those rates, because as I recall, we got the study, it was pretty broad.
That's right.
Actually, your number's probably closer to what, actually, the, the range was even higher than 5,000.
It was. I think we went with 60%.
Yeah, we kind of went with 60 or so. And I wouldn't mind us looking at, at what our, some of our neighbors are doing, and, and just making sure we don't, we don't not attend to those fees and increasing them as appropriate. I mean, to remind council what that is, it's basically when a new person, a new, a new customer, you're tying into the, building a new home, you're tying into the water system, it's saying, you need to, the state mandated, so it's not us, but the state mandated, you need to pay a fee because you're coming in and purchasing in assets this infrastructure that the town has put in place over the, you know, the decades, which is, makes, makes a lot of sense. I guess it's originally what a tap fee would have been, but our tap fees were, you know, just too, it wasn't sufficient. And so we just want to make sure that that's reasonable, because it's not fair to our existing citizens when, you know, new development comes in, new development, land acts, and new development comes in, and we're not, we're not assessing an appropriate fee that, that our existing citizens have paid for this infrastructure that others are benefiting from.
And we've also, now that we've had a little while, had just a couple instances of abuses that we don't have information for, engineers to not calculate. So we've had, you know, the to-do list to revisit that list, that spreadsheet, to capture some of those things that we did.
Yeah, just take a peek, and it's just, something like that can easily set, as it really, yeah, for too long a period of time before you look at it. So, but did we start collecting, when did that happen? Did that happen in 19?
Uh, probably, probably 19, yep. Probably the latter part of 19.
I mean, did we actually started charging the new fee and so forth? Yeah. No, I can't either. It, yeah.
That sounds...
It either has been, it's either one year or five.
It was before COVID. And it was before COVID, I know that.
Yeah, anyway, I'm sorry to stop on that. But it, I think it would be good to revisit that, to make sure in the ballpark.
Just on a side question, not related to water, though, the same principle could be applied to roads, and fire, and, you know, all the infrastructure that a new home gets to access.
It could, except the state mandated this one, so...
Right. Well, just having talked about road maintenance brought it to my mind.
And I don't know where the law stands on chart. What is that? I'm trying to think of the, the term for the fee that you charge sometimes for, it's just gaping me right now, anyway.
You know, the price of parks, or, excuse me, water parks, the price of those have significantly increased, and it could play a factor in the revisiting that, too.
Right.
And I, I'm using $57,500 from fund balance in the water fund to balance.
Tell us about water sales.
Water sales. All right, so our water sales, we are, we are actually projecting that being, well, one point, one point, a million and a half dollars, so it's up quite a bit. You know, we're, we're going through, we're actually meeting with the City of Asheville today to talk about, you know, as we've taken over these customers, these 600 customers from Asheville, I think we've got about 450 roughly right now, our, our, our purchases from the City of Asheville Water have went up, which is to be expected. You know, if we're, if we're taking on these new customers, we would expect to pay more money for that, and I understand that. On the flip side of that, we just haven't seen that increase in revenue, which has been a little bit concerning for me and some staff. So we're meeting today with Asheville to talk, talk through some of that. I don't know what that is, if there's a valve or something that may be turned a different way, that we're feeding water back into their system. I'm just not sure where that water's going. Now, I think something we may not have factored in, and speaking with the mayor about this, I don't know when that was, a few weeks ago, but, you know, when we, when we projected these numbers for this year, taking over those customers, I don't think we factored in our water loss. And I think that's something that we've, that we've struggled with in the past on water loss, and that can be from anything from, you know, the meter, the older the meters get, the worse they are for the town, the better they are for the customer. They read more for the customer side if they're older. The newer meters read better for us. So as, as we move to replacing all those meters, I think that's gonna help some. You know, we have leaks that, you know, sometimes those are every week, sometimes those are daily. It's hard to get a firm grasp on how much water actually you lose in a leak, so we have to kind of guesstimate on some of that. But I think we just should be at a, at a higher number now on our sales than we are.
Right.
Based off of what we're purchasing. In this budget, I've also included the increase of that water purchase number to account for where I think we thought we would, thought we would be now with the 400,000 gallon capacity reservation fee that we pay with Asheville, which is about $7,300 a month to pay to hold that 400,000 gallons every month. Right now, we're, we're paying the fee for 200,000 gallons, which is about $2,500 a month or something, roughly.
But you, you've included...
But I've included that number in this, in this proposed budget.
Right.
Which you would see in operations. So on this line, line 16, co-op purchases, as you can see, I think we've, we missed the, we kind of missed budgeting that in this current budget. We budgeted 160, which was off. It should have been a little more anyway, but we were budgeting 285 for next year. So it's, it's an increase of about $125,000. A lot of that is that new capacity fee, but a lot of it is just, just based on what we're purchasing from Asheville right now.
So we're, our agreement with City of Asheville, it's not the one we sent over, but the one that came back, was for 400,000. And, and we are presently at...
We're using about, we're currently using about 240,000 gallons, roughly.
So, so we're, we're okay there. We need to look at that, because that'll change at some juncture. But on the agreement with Ridgecrest... But on the agreement with Ridgecrest, should, I don't know when they're coming back.
We're meeting with them today, actually.
Meeting with them today, oh, water meeting day, huh? So I, I think, in my discussions with the town manager, in selling water to Ridgecrest, they need a commitment, whether they use it or not, they need a commitment for two hundred thousand gallons a day per act.
That's what, yeah, that's right.
And so, in telling them what that would cost them, as far as water purchase is concerned, and I said it doesn't cost us anything as far as delivering it, I mean, they've, they've got to do the, get it, they've got to get it to them. But they, they would be responsible not only for just purchasing the water purchase number, but also for the, what's the fee called?
I think it's a capacity fee.
Capacity fee, I mean, they need to, we need to, we would need to amend, and the city of Asheville has to agree, which I think they probably would, but we need to amend, and I think the amendment, I mean, I haven't spoken to Attorney Steve about it, needs to specifically address Ridgecrest. I mean, their two hundred thousand gallons.
He's gonna be with us in that meeting with Ridgecrest this morning, yeah.
Is he aware of that, and all that sort of thing? I mean, in other words, it's fine, you know, I'm happy. I think it's a great thing to be able to get them water, and for them, to help them be successful at the conference center. But, you know, we can't pay the, we can't pay the fees for it.
No, and I think, you know, what, as we, I know we talked about this in a meeting before, but they, they run into an issue where they, they've got, they don't really need the water, but a few months out of the year, but unfortunately, the way that's regulated is they've got to have that, and they don't have it.
Basically, in the same situation we was in, where it was seasonal. At the end of winter, when the car wash is fired and stuff, you know, we couldn't maintain capacity, and they're short there, too.
One thing that I ask Josh about frequently, really, but you know, it's just always something that bounces around in my head, is duplicity in the water system. I mean, our pumps, especially our new pump, and duplicity there, but also duplicity in storage, and if we're, if we're adequately covered there. And, and that, I'm not asking for an answer to that necessarily today, but, but we need to, that's something we, I think we need to assure the public of, and so forth. If you have a point to speak, go ahead.
Absolutely, we, so in our pump stations, you know, there's multiple pumps. So it's, per se, the two pump stations I'm using, example, there's three in it. They move approximately five hundred fifty gallons per minute. But they'll run twelve to sixteen hours, one pump, there's three pumps, and then after that sixteen hours, it shuts off. Well, when it comes time to run again, the next pump comes on and gives that one a rest. So it goes through three cycles before it gets back to that pump, which saves hours on the pumps. Also, I made it a priority in mind years ago to make sure we have these pumps in stock, if one does go down, because these ain't something you can just call it by the phone and say, hey, I need this pump. The pumps are special built, they're custom-built pumps for the purpose they're needed. So if one did go down, it could take several months to even get it on hand. So as we look into these pump stations, we try to go ahead and have an extra pump on hand if one goes down at all times.
That's great, that, that's great, and that, and Josh has taught that, but it'd be great for the public to hear that. What about storage? Because isn't our system reliant on the big tank, really, to get pumps up there, and then gets distributed, and the same with our other tank up here?
Yeah, so we got four main tanks, and then we got two little tanks at the top of Black Mountain Estates, which feeds about six to seven houses. They're like thirty-five thousand gallon apiece. But our big tanks, which, the, the two biggest tanks is, is Henfield, of course, and then you've got South Tank, which is over in Christmont, and then we've got Black Mountain Estates, that's the three biggest ones. We're good on storage there, because, especially now that we got the connection with Asheville, and then we got the SCADA system on there, too, we can, we can keep those tank levels full at all times. The problem with what we're seeing, as far as what Josh was talking about, is those tanks, we can see how much they drop per day in so much, in, in any timeframe. So you come into the mornings, and you're, you're losing, you know, two or three feet of water in a tank per morning, and when you do the math, that's several hundred thousand gallons of water above what we think it should be. Now, we're not, we're not losing now because of the connection with Asheville, it's just putting the water right back in the tank, but we got to figure out where that water's going, so we don't want this all.
Which address is this, what the concern that we had with, with the leak, what they're called, leakage? That's, that's where you're seeing, it's in the tank levels.
Right, and, you know, losing that much water, if you remember, it's been a few years back, whenever we had the floods, we had the, the two-inch line bust under the bridge, down at the no shop, and it was actually under the river, so we had no way of seeing it until the levels went down. That's about what it's equivalent to, and the way we got the numbers figured, is a two-inch line running at full capacity. That would, with no floods or anything like that, it would have to show somewhere, that's a significant leak, which makes us think that there's a valve off or something. Because it all started when we actually had the connection with Asheville, and it's very easy for us to be pumping water back into their system that we don't even know about. And honestly, that would be the best scenario for us, I think, because it would be a simple fee.
Right, right. Keep us posted.
Yeah, we will. Customer service, real quick.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yes, sir. Only thing, you know, really substantial in the, this is the water customer service, I'm sorry. We got two employees in this, in this department, you know, they do all the water billing, deal with all the customers, they come through and pay their bills, water bills. First, as far as capital for this, I've got five thousand dollars in here, and that is to replace our, our little tailor drawer. That's, I think it was in the, the old town hall that was over in town square at one time. Isn't that where, that's where town hall was, right?
Well, what's wrong with it, Josh?
It's just, it is mad, the end of the useful life, it's just it.
They move it over to the museum.
Have to get something to do, don't they?
Yeah, that's right. Uh, let's see, all right, operations. So for water, water operations, we have one new position in here, that is forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. This would be, I mean, essentially another worker bee for Jamie, water tech one, probably doing, you know, just doing water leaks, just all the things that those folks have to deal with on a daily basis. I mentioned the increase for Asheville, our departmental supplies have increased by twenty thousand dollars, and that really is due to, well, we have more customers now, and the price of parts has gone up, if we can even find them, is the issue we're having now. So that, hopefully, that, that's not gonna affect us too much. Contract services, we've increased, let me go to that line, which is here. We've increased that quite a bit. Now, this is for, thirty thousand dollars of this is for a water system study. They would look at, you know, I think this study is gonna look more at, you know, capital, capital things, you know, water rates, are we, are we charging the right rates, do we need to be doing something different? And I think there's, there's a whole different, we could be doing, I mean, towns do tiered structures, I mean, there's a whole different way to look at that, too. So I think that's probably worth spending the money and taking a look at, to be honest. And then our water, our water operator, so we contract, we contract with Charlie Gross to do our water, water operations typically. I think in the past, we've had someone, someone on staff that does that. But we've decided a few years ago to go with a contract, and they can end up saving us some money in the end. But that has increased because with these new customers now that we've taken on from Asheville, we, we've kind of been thrown into a different level now of service from the state. So we have to provide essentially more hours of time, more tests, more testing. But you get, get over a certain number of customers, you fall into a new category. So he may have been coming two days a week to do different things, now he's got to come four days a week. So it's just increased that cost. As far as capital for water goes, uh, let's see, a big number. This is what I have in here, I have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to transfer to our capital project fund for our meters, our automated meters. I have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in here for our continuation of our Asheville customer transfer, the different things we need to do to get those all online. I have a hundred thousand in here for water line replacement, just general water line placement throughout the year. And sixty, about sixty thousand dollars for, for a shoring box, which is just a big metal box you put in, a hole that you dig to keep people safe, it's required by OSHA to have those. And stock for our, those big pumps, or different types of things for our water department. As I mentioned, I'm proposing that we appropriate fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars from fund balance to balance the water fund budget. Any questions on water fund?
You know, actually, to me, this, like you throwing this up on the screen and just going through it, works well when we're just doing the water department update. And just, I think it helps you kind of get an overview of what, of all, of all you have to do in the water and so forth. What's going on?
All right, you wanna do golf fund real fast?
Yep.
It shouldn't take long at all, because it's pretty small. All right. So it's not gonna be a whole lot new at all in the golf fund, a couple of things. So our total expenditures are gonna be seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. And let's go into, this is operations. So the golf fund has two, two, kind of two departments, it has an operations side, does all the maintenance, things of that nature, and then we have the pro shop side that does all the, the duties at the pro shop. And that's really one full-time position for the pro shop, which would be Brent Miller, and then we have some part-time, part-time help at the pro shop. As far as the operations side, if I'm not mistaken, three full-time positions, and then quite a few part-time positions that we found throughout the year to do different, typically mowing, weed eating, things of that nature to keep up with stuff. Not a lot, not a lot has changed at all in operations. I will say, the, the thing that is new in operations is gonna do be, where is that? So this equipment line, the M and R equipment is where we do leases. So we are going, I've got it here, too, proposing that we lease for, for Jerry and his guys, it's something called a VIN track, it's just a piece of equipment that they can do multiple things with. So it can do mowing, it can do like grading, it can do all kinds of things. And that ends up being about sixty-three hundred a year, I think, is the cost on that. But that is something, you know, the golf fund, unfortunately, just because of what it is, it's hard to, it's hard to fund a lot of capital in the golf fund, because the money's not there. But I think, you know, this, this is a good step for them, and I think it'll provide them with some needed equipment that they needed for a while to do certain things. Uh, let's see, as far as, our debt has increased. We have debt now in the golf fund, which it's been a while since we've had debt in the golf fund, and that's due to our golf carts. So what I've got proposed in here, and the council has not seen this yet, probably will be a July meeting where I get some approval from what, what y'all want to do as far as a three-year term or a five-year term on the golf cart purchases for the debt. I think we just agreed to take out debt, I don't think you agreed on what you were gonna do as far as terms, because I didn't have those rates at that time. This one is based, what I have in here now is based off a three-year term, fifty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars every year, and if I'm not mistaken, that interest rate's about one point two percent, which is, it's hard to beat that.
That's great.
And that would be for seventy-two carts. Then, of course, they'll take all the old ones and then replace them with these new ones, so. And if I remember correctly, that was gonna be about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars roughly, for those seventy-two carts, after the, what we get for our existing carts. And then we already increased our golf course rates, we did that in May, increased those rates. So I'm, I'm projecting that our, our revenue this year is, I'll just tell you right now, I've got two hundred and ninety in here for green fees, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Right now, we're at two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for this year, so I think that's probably a pretty good number, maybe a little more. Our memberships, you know, we did go up on our memberships a little, so I think we'll get some, some increase in revenues in that line item, same for golf carts, I think. And I hope this trend continues, but I think a lot of people right now are playing golf, and we love it, and I hope we get more and more. And then I mentioned to you, I think our, our contribution of the general fund in the past, we've done, you know, anywhere from a hundred and thirty or more. I'm projecting seventy-six, nine, and hopefully that we can stick to that this time with our new revenues. And that's pretty it, pretty much it for the golf fund, pretty straightforward.
Right, thank you.
Can you help me, and maybe the public, understand why the golf is a separate fund and not just part of the recreation department?
You know, and I think, maybe Tammy can weigh in, but, and I think over the years, the auditors, you know, they've had questions on whether or not we should include this in, roll it into the general fund. I think right now, it's operating more as a, you know, kind of a proprietary fund. Kind of, kind of like the water fund, where it's, where it's fee-based, and we're using those fees to do all the, all the work in the golf course. I think doing it this way allows us to keep up with it a little bit better. If you roll it into the general fund, it may be a little harder to keep up with it. I don't know there's anything wrong with rolling it into the general fund, this is just how we've been doing it for years.
Tammy, you have any comments on that?
Not really, if it continues to lose every year, and the general fund is having to keep it up, then usually it's recommended just to roll it into the general fund, because, I mean, you're paying for it basically anyway. So it would work the same as the pool or anything else, where, you know, the, the pool passes and concessions pays for certain other things, but can't pay for everything.
Right.
If it's able to sustain itself on its own, then even it needs to stay in a separate fund. But that's pretty much up to the board and Josh, if you want to roll it.
I think, you know, to compare, it, it is a proprietary fund, I mean, it's a, and, and one, one auditor, auditor before last, said, you know, maybe you need to just roll it over and keep it in the general fund. And the, and the current ones did not think that was a good idea. And you can take it either way, it's sort of a matter of opinion, but in my thinking, it, it, it sort of evolves with what you think, what you see evolve over two decades. You know, two decades ago, the golf course, you know, was fine, and golf was very popular, and maybe a little bit more than two decades, but you'll be all the young people playing in the nineties. And, and then times changed, and then we also had some difficult weather years. But our intention has always been for the golf course not to be supported by the general fund. And to me, that's the key thing, and it's more of a government's issue. But is it, is it realistic to think that the golf course can support itself? And it is, it just depends on, you know, it just depends on a lot of things, and like a lot of businesses, they go through times where people don't play as much golf as they did, young people don't, and however, the pandemic helped that a good bit, swung back in the other direction. So I think it's probably good that it stay a proprietary fund, but that would be, I think Tammy's comment's a key thing. If it gets to the point where it's really like your pool, or something like that, then, then there's no reason to, you know, to hold it out as something that could actually operate as a business. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
And I think, you know, once we have our audit done this year, which we'll jump right into after our budget, to close out this fiscal year we're in now, but I think we're gonna be pleasantly surprised at what, at what the golf course has done this year. And I, and I think, you know, we've done, tried to do a good job, which I think we always do, but a lot of that stuff is weather-dependent.
Yes.
I mean, you know, if, if you get a lot of rain, it's just what, you know, you just, there's nothing you can do about it. But I think this is gonna be the best year we've had in a long time.
I, I spoke to folks at the county, just because I served on the audit committee for the county, and when county had, I have this right, so don't hold me to this, but when the county had muni, they kept it in the proprietary fund. When the city had muni, which I think they did now, they have not kept it in the proprietary fund. So it's all a matter of what governments wants, I think.
And I think that Asheville, they, that, that's managed by some, an outside company, I believe, the golf course over there, but.
I appreciate that explanation, I think the public in general needs to, has questions around that, and it was good to hear in, in this venue. I think it's a good question to keep asking every year, and clearly the auditors have thoughts, and, you know, I hope, I hope this is the year, it's gonna be a, a great revenue year for us, I, I really hope it is, so.
But as I have communicated to council and written for them, the golf course is of more value to the town than just the bottom line of the P and L each year.
I'm not after, I'm not trying to get rid of the golf course, I was just asking what, it was an accounting question, really.
Well, that's the golf fund, now we have, you know, we talked about the stormwater fund a little bit last time, I have that in here. It's three hundred and ninety-two thousand. fund a little bit last time. I have that in here. It's 392,500 is that total budget. And I think that's going to be dependent on, at this point, how, how the public hearing goes, because we've got to set all that up.
We saw the budget last week.
And it really hasn't changed.
Two weeks ago.
It hasn't changed hardly any. So I, you know, we can go through, if this is enough for today, we, it's up to y'all.
What else is to go through?
Well, I've got the capital, and then we can try and run through some of that, the, you know, the CIP, or we can save that.
The but, but the, the capital budgeted for this fiscal year, we already discussed.
I went through that. That's correct. That is correct.
Let's just hold out, let's hold the bigger, the, the capital for future years for, for another meeting. I don't see any reasons to look at that today because we can change that anytime. Wouldn't hurt before we stop our string of meetings, Thursday morning meetings, to make that one. That doesn't need to be that long. It's an important, it's an important part of our budgeting. Does that sound good to council? To kind of do that, do that some morning by itself? Because it, it requires a good bit of discussion.
Well, I see. I mean, it's just going to be more detailed, and it's every department kind of broke down and what their capital request may be. And so, yeah.
Sounds good. So, is that, got it, Josh?
That's all, that's all the funds.
I think it was fruitful. I think it was a good discussion. Any, any questions or comments from council?
I just have a question not related to the budget, but I was wondering about an EV update.
Oh, yeah. So the EV update, we, I have decided to hold that until the new budget year, and this is why. Because if we do that now, then we're going to cross fiscal years, and it just becomes to be an accounting pain. Because we really, really would need to set up a capital project fund for that little amount of money. I would prefer to just wait till July 1st.
It's okay.
And, and we've talked to the contractor. He's fine with that. So come July 1, we will get rolling on those. We have the parts in the building now.
That's what I was wondering, where we were with that.
So yes, we are going to do that July 1.
That's great.
And it's probably only like four days of work, so it should be a very quick turnaround.
Yeah, great.
And those will be going just for, for, for council and public's, just a reminder, that's going at the library, one at the library. Well, it's one, but it can charge two.
Right.
It's two ports, two at the library and then two at Lakeview.
Right, right, right. All right. Anything else, council? All right. Thank you, Mitch or, thank you, Josh.